Probably in a, in a lifetime of challenges in the 60 years of the existence of Rochester University, it would be hard to find a year where the institution has faced more challenges or more unique kinds of challenges. And last March, as many of you know, we had to make all kinds of moves very quickly and were literally making decisions that were based on the best information that we had at a point in time. And within 45 minutes of that decision that was the best we could make at that point in time, the situation changed and we had to alter our course and, and make a different kind of decision and make some different choices. But we decided in March, and then shortly after we made the decision, the governor shut down everybody, decided that we would send students home and that we would immediately convert all of our course delivery to fully online. We did that in March and you can imagine how that took the mobilization of all of our faculty and staff and every corner of the campus in all sorts of ways. We refunded the, the difference in the room and board that students had paid for the remainder of the semester, sent them home and they finished up their semester online. Well, that's how we wrapped up last year, but at the same time that we were doing that and wrapping up last year, we were really mobilizing and getting ready for this year, understanding that, that the situation was going to change pretty drastically. And we spent a lot of time through the summer preparing for providing as safe and healthy an environment as we possibly could for the return of our students. So we have revamped classrooms. We have bought all manner of personal protective equipment. We've had a, a task force chaired by Dr. Ruder and participated in by a, a, a large cross-section of administration and faculty and staff across the campus. They've been working since March and meeting regularly, trying to not only prepare for the fall, but make any changes on the fly that we would need to make, given the changing environment and working with the most recent data and the most current and best science that's available to us. So our students are back on campus. We have reconfigured our classrooms to ensure social distancing. Everybody is wearing face masks across the campus. Everybody wears a face mask indoors and outdoors, they wear a face mask if they're not able to distance six feet or more and sometimes even then. And you'll hear a little bit more, I'm sure, from Clint about kind of how we've, we fine-tuned some of that related to athletics. For faculty, the world has changed because we're now standing behind a plexiglass screen, talking to our students who are distanced out in our classrooms and wearing masks. And we also have reconfigured all of our classrooms to have much better audio visual capabilities so that if a student is not able to be in class, either because they are sick or because they've had close contact with someone else who is sick, even if they're taking a face-to-face class, they can plug in and watch that class in real time. We've invested an awful lot of money in cleaning supplies, everything from ultraviolet back, you know, cleansers and sterilizers for our science labs to right down to portable hand sanitizer units and all sorts of hand sanitizers and, and cleaners and paper towels and rubber gloves and all the things that we need to try to keep our campus surfaces as safe as we can. Our students are all being screened. Commuters are screened once a day before they come to campus. They have a campus app that they fill out that monitors their symptoms. They come in, we take their temperature, we check them in, and students who are symptomatic are, are, are isolated and lined up for testing. We test or screen rather our residential students twice a day, morning and night, and working hard to try to, to maintain as healthy an environment as we possibly can. There's a lot of other things going on related to that. So far, we've been really pleased with a couple of things. The first thing that has really been noteworthy to me is that with very few exceptions, obviously we occasionally have some exceptions, but our students have really gotten on board with, with responsible behavior in managing life in the middle of this pandemic. And we have had very few problems with students. They seem to really have, have adopted the spirit of this. We've asked them to, to take an honor pledge associated with their behavior related to the pandemic. And it's been remarkable to see how well the students as well as the faculty and staff have pulled together. And I think largely as a result of that, we've had very, very few problems. We have not had a COVID outbreak. And at this point, we're, we're very grateful that we still have a healthy campus community. There's a lot that you read in the news every day about outbreaks in various college campuses. So far, we've been spared that and our hope is that we will continue to be and we're going to do everything that we can to try to, to conduct ourselves in a fashion that, that enhances the likelihood of that. Should that not work and should we begin to have an increase of illness on the campus, we're prepared to make moves and adapt, not unlike what we did in March, but to adapt and to accommodate to the needs that we need to make in order to, to ensure that students are taken care of. So all that's kind of COVID-related. The other things that are, that are important for alumni to think about is we've worked really hard over the course of the last few years at the institution to deepen our connections to the community, built and strengthened relationships in the community. We're really working hard to become Rochester's university. And I think we are taking on more and more of that idea. The, the folks in the development office can talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we've done to participate with the community more deeply. We've also worked hard to really clarify our identity as an institution as we've transitioned from being called Rochester College to being called Rochester University. We've tried to take advantage of the opportunity of that name change to clarify our identity as a Christian institution with our Christian faith at the core of who we are and at the core of what we do. And we've also really focused our attention and will continue to mobilize our efforts this year on issues related to social justice and diversity and inclusion. I hope that you all had an opportunity to read our diversity and inclusion statement that I wrote subsequent to some of the tragic events related to George Floyd and Ahmaud Arbery in particular. And as we put that statement out there, we've, we've really committed ourself to try to follow through, to not just talk, but to try to do some things that are very meaningful for our students and for our community. And there'll be a lot more about that that will be going on over the course of this year. We feel that's really at the core of our identity as well. We have had some great success with accreditation relations. I think it's fair to say, just as, as straightforward as I can, that in the 20 years that I have been at this institution, we're in a better position in terms of our accreditation relations with the Higher Learning Commission than we have ever been. For the first time, at least since the year 2000, we do not have any interim monitoring from the Higher Learning Commission between our regular periodic accreditation visits. That's a product of an awful lot of work from an awful lot of people, but one thing that you should know about that as an alum is that the academic reputation of the institution that you graduated from has continued to grow and been enhanced. And that's because we've been able to do a good job with trying to strengthen our programs and strengthen the things that we've done. As a quick example of that, one sort of illustration of that, some of you may have heard that our early childhood studies program was recently ranked number one in the nation by study.com. And those of you that know me well know that I tend to be a little bit dubious about these ranking systems and sometimes the, the information that goes into them is more important than the information that comes out of them. But study.com is a legitimate sort of organization and, and we're pleased that, that they evaluated our early childhood studies program so well. If you haven't been on campus, it has continued to really transform. The campus is much more beautiful and has developed in some really wonderful ways. The Lake North Central Park is, is really an amazing place now, particularly with the addition of the Slater Montgomery Family Chapel. And if you haven't had an opportunity to come by and visit, you need to come, take a walk through campus and take a look at the place. It, it has really begun to shine and, and really become a showpiece in some, in some terrific ways. Enrollment in, in the face of all these challenges, and I won't steal thunder from Clint and Scott, but I will just say that as we have looked around us and seen institution after institution after institution, that has had to lay off people, that has had to cut programs, that has looked at incredibly declining, sharply declining enrollment largely as a result of sort of the paired pressures of what's going on in higher education in general, compounded and complicated by the COVID-19 pandemic. I am thankful and pleased to say that Rochester University has not had to experience any of those things. We've not laid anybody off as a result of COVID-19. And we think if things hold, we just passed census date and we're still sort of dotting all the i's and, and crossing all the t's related to our enrollment, but we believe that on a head count basis, and with everyone that is a student, either early college, undergraduate, traditional undergraduate accelerated learning and graduate students, we'll, we're going to have the largest head count of enrollment in the history of Rochester University. We're going to be over 1,200 this year total, which is a, which is kind of a nice milestone. And you'll hear more about that specifically from Clint and Scott. So as we look at what's going on and as we think about where we are, there's a lot of work left to do. There's a lot of uncertainty as this year plays itself out, but we're, we're thankful for God's help in the way that things have developed over the course of this year. We're excited about the year to come. We're excited about some changes and some growth in our development office and alumni relations. If you haven't met Angela, our new alumni relations officer, I think she's on the call. In fact, she's waving now on the call. You'll need to meet her. We're delighted that she's a part of the team now and we're, we're looking forward to the year and we're looking forward particularly as, as it relates to alumni, to, to getting in better touch with you, to connecting with you, to, to be a better service to you as an institution so that you'll know that, that Rochester University is not just the place where you went to school that's going to call you up and ask you for money, but is the place that you graduated from that had, that continues to be an important contributor and partner in your life. And we're looking forward to be able to be a, a place that you can be proud of and a place that will be supportive of you as well. And we hope this call will help contribute to that. So I will stop and take a breath there. I don't want to take up, I think I already took up more than my allotted time and then some, but I will, I'll shut up and I'll, I'll throw it, I think, to Clint.
Thanks a lot, Brian. I'm thrilled to be able to spend a few minutes with you. I will try to do my best to stick to the, the timing and if you have specific questions about athletics, then we can circle back to it. But I would say that, you know, one of my favorite things to do is to actually host a former student athlete. I had the chance to do that a few days ago. In fact, some of you on this call might remember, Adam Hacius, who is now living over in Tanzania, but he, he popped in and just made my day and I was able to show him around and just watching his face light up when he saw some of the new things here at the university and being able to hand him a T-shirt and seeing how much that meant to him, you know, turns around and, and means an awful lot to me. So if, if any of you at any point want to come back and, and look around or, or take a tour, see some of the new things on campus, see our new logo, you are welcome to do that anytime and, and I would be thrilled to spend time with you and to, and to, to catch up. In fact, I, I see Elliot Curran on the call and, and today I got word that our, our golf team actually beat two teams in our conference that previously we have not ever beat. And, you know, Elliot's part of that. I mean, Elliot was here, we recruited him hard to come over here and help us out and get the golf program started. And so a big part of that victory today, you know, I mean Elliot, Elliot own, kind of owns a piece of that. And so just please know that that's true and, and stop by anytime. I had the luxury last week of getting invited to a Zoom call much like this of all the, the alum basketball coaches that have ever coached at Kent State University. And so we had dozens and dozens and dozens of coaches on the call and it just, it just felt, it just felt so neat to be able to interact with, with people that have kind of done what you've done and, and kind of affirm what you've done and be able to, you know, like, hey, I remember you and remember the, what you did and, and, and you, you all have that same story. We are now, if you don't know, we're now up to 21 varsity sports. When I was asked to take over the athletic department, I think we were at eight and so, and that was, that was a long time ago, but we, we've been growing. We're now up to 21. 20 of those are, are varsity sports and we have full and robust rosters. In fact, several of those rosters we have, we have so many that we, we have JV teams or reserve teams. Some of our, I won't go through the whole list, but some of our newer teams we've added would be wrestling and women's lacrosse. Those are, I think, the two newest. And we, we do look to add sports from time to time, but we, we, we weren't quite at growth mode. Our goal this past year was just to keep, you know, to grow the rosters that we, that we've had and, and we've done that. Dr. Stogner mentioned this, but we're sitting at exactly 340 student athletes. Elliot, when you were here, we were probably at 240. So, so we, the athletic department, you know, has, has really grown, not only in terms of the number of sports we offer, but also the, the roster sizes on those sports. We, within the NAIA, some of you know, probably know, we're part of a regional conference now known as the WAC and that stands for Wolverine Who's Your Athletic Conference? And so that sort of automatically puts us in our natural peer group where, you know, where I think we belong with, with our, with our colleagues. And so, you know, that's, that's the other NAIA schools in the state. Some of those schools, just to highlight a few would be Madonna, Sienna Heights, Cornerstone, Lawrence Tech, Concordia. You know, these, these are schools you've, you've probably heard of and you're familiar with. And so that's, that's, that's the group we're a part of athletically. Lot of community service is done. If you ever need things, please, please reach out or I think, I think, sorry, second time I'm picking on you Elliot, but Elliot's called on us a few times for our student athletes to go out and, and help with reading and different things at the school he's at. So we love doing that. And so anytime you, you have a need, if you'd let us know, we would, we would try to help. We're doing a good job, I think, most importantly, in the classroom. In fact, some of our teams not only finished at the top, some of them near the top in terms of the, the amount of scholar athletes we had within our conference. And that would be student athletes with a GPA of, of 3.6 or higher. And so I think good things are happening all around there. Scott may tell you more about this and, and probably knows a little more about it than I do, the, the history of it, but we have recently, as you probably have noticed, changed our name, but we've also changed our logo and some of our designs. And so again, if you, if you end up being on campus, I'd love to kind of show you around. There's some neat things in the, in the, the arena that, that sort of depict that. Some of you remember the old totem pole that is back and planted in the arena and you're, you're welcome to come see that anytime and, and just catch up. So there's some things athletically and when we're done, I'd be thrilled to, to talk more, answer any questions, but I wanted to give you some highlights real quick. Thanks for listening. I think Scott or I think.
Yep, it's me next. Thanks, Coach. I actually have a Warrior Bird shirt on here and we're real, really proud of our, our new image, both the university logo as well as the new athletics look. And so far, it's been pretty well received. So we completed the transition from RC to RU on time. We were supposed to be completed with that in August of 2020. If you look hard around the campus, you might still see a sign or two that says Rochester College, but we are, we're, we're quickly replacing those. And so, you know, the big thing I think is that the reception that the, the transition from Rochester College to Rochester University has had, especially with our more recent alumni, students recognizing the value of this name change and, and paying some, some good compliments to the university, you know, looking for opportunities to promote us during a time when we're kind of trying to rebrand ourselves, if you will, in the marketplace. And so perhaps if you've been driving around the last year or so, you've seen Rochester University billboards or social media posts or lots of other media things that we are doing. I often remind Dr. Stogner though, that if he is seeing our social media and retargeted ads, we're not doing something right because he's not in our, our market group. So you may or may not have seen some of those things, but there's been a significant investment on the part of the institution in remarketing or marketing and rebranding. And so far, it's gone, it's gone quite well. With regard to admissions, as Dr. Stogner said just a moment ago, we, we believe that we're going to have solid numbers this fall. I can't tell you enough about how hard our, in particular, our, our coaches, our athletic coaches worked this year to recruit and fill their rosters. You know, a record number of, of student athletes on campus has been a great thing. The admissions office has had a little uptick as well from our performance last year. And so I think we're starting out with, with a really good group of, of students this fall. I believe even our retention has been up a little bit. So things are going well at the university in terms of, of recruiting students. And, you know, as alumni, from time to time, I'm asked by alumni, what can they, they can do to help? And the most important thing that you can do to help in my mind is to talk to people that you come in contact with who either have college-age children or you're in contact with college-age folks and just asking them to give us a look. That's, that's the best thing that you can do for the university right now is, is to do that. We are introducing, introducing a couple of new academic programs this fall, which we're really excited about in terms of recruiting. One, information systems programming degree, and then we're hopeful sometime in January to announce a healthcare management program that's still in development. And so things, things are going quite well. I would say the other big thing that's happened in admissions, the administration was gracious enough to provide us the funds to invest in some new technology that allows us to do some things that the institution's never been able to do before. One of those things I mentioned already, retargeting ads and some of the advertising that we're doing, you've probably all been creeped on if you've, you know, said something to Siri or you've acted in a certain way around your iPad, but we're, we're using some of the creeper media tools, if you will, for, to attract students and to communicate with them. And the most important thing with that seriously is to just be able to communicate with a prospective student when they're thinking about us. And that's been a real advantage. We've been able to do some real-time things with some of our marketing. We've recently engaged with the largest recruiting college search platform in the world in niche.com and that's already providing us with some nice leads for the fall '21 recruiting cycle. And so it's an exciting time at the university. Our recruiting staff is, is very professional and in fact, I mentioned earlier that we're up here on our retreat. So we will be concentrating in sessions tomorrow about how we can continue to get the word out about Rochester University and why students ought to consider investing in their education and, and coming here to be part of our community. So again, thanks very much for joining us tonight and I'm not sure who follows me. Remy maybe?
Yep, that's me. And so speaking of rebranding, we've done, we've rebranded academics in this last year and that came with some new institutional learning goals epic, which stands for exploring, preparing, integrating, calling. It's a little bit of a play on words and talks about the journey. We looked at general education curriculum and aligned that with our new rebrand of the institutional learning goals. And so that resulted in a freshman year experience that is this year-long programming in GenEd with a really strong focus on skill development and also the exploration of calling and the exploration of vocation. Because again, like Dr. Stogner said, it's really important that we, we bring back that idea that we are a Christian institution. New programs that are coming up, BS Information Systems launches this fall, and so we're very excited about that. We also have a BBA Computer Information Systems that has launched. And so that is a, that is a completion program that we have in, in active now, actually. The Masters of Arts and Clinical Psychology, we're working on that and hoping to launch that. Hopefully we'll get a visit from the HLC in the next year and be able to launch that fully the year after. We are looking at the BBA, like Scott said, in healthcare management and hoping to be able to launch that very soon also. And we're, we're still looking at, at social work, the Bachelors of Science and Social Work. Faculty are really working hard to strengthen math and science at the institution. And what we're really looking to do is reprioritize programming so that we are able to really meet the needs of the workforce. And we're seeing that as increased experiential learning. We're seeing increased internships in our business programs. Clinical hours exist already with some of our other professional programs. And we're looking at increasing some internships with our humanities and, you know, our, our humanities, School of Arts and Science, a College of Arts and Sciences program so that people can get that experience while they're in school and then really become a strong candidate when they come out of school. And so it's very exciting for academics right now. Lot of changes that are going on, but really strong changes in the positive direction. Steve, I think it's you. Steve's going to talk to you too, I think, about some mentoring programs that'll help with that experiential learning that we're talking about.
Exactly. Thank you. Wow, lots of great stuff here and a common theme, new, exciting, fresh rebranding. We're picking up that theme and developing alumni relations as well. You met Angie Hague a little bit earlier when the president introduced her. You saw the secret weapon, her son Charlie, I think, popped in and out of the screen a few minutes ago. Now, people can say no to us when we call, but no one can say no to Charlie. So that's, that's an excellent weapon to have on call when we need him. Angie comes to us with lots of experience. She's our new development and alumni relations officer. She's been at some great places and has already jumped in and made a difference with our golf outing that's coming up. Hey Charlie. And you, so if you're going to be at the golf outing on Wednesday, you'll see Angie there. Not sure about Charlie. And if you want to golf and you haven't signed up yet, there's still a chance to do that. And that is this coming Wednesday. Dr. Ruder mentioned our mentorship program, Rise. We're really excited about the way that this has come together. Some of the initiatives that we talked about early on with the alumni board, and I see a number of our alumni board members on the call tonight. Thank you for being here, Elliot. I see Jim, I think Nancy's out there, maybe a couple of other people. So we talked about a way to engage our alumni a little bit more effectively in the lives of students right now. And this mentorship program is going to give a great opportunity to do that. So we're partnering with, with Clint and those that are doing the mentorship at the freshman level and going to partner with the School of Business at the junior and senior level. And so we do have a website if you want to go check it out, if you're interested in being a mentor or you know somebody that might be, you can sign up on there. There's forums and it's going to be just a wonderful program that's going to be so helpful to students. And I've been involved in these programs before and I always say, it's a contest to see who's having more fun, the mentor or the mentee. They really build some strong relationships and that's something we're focusing on this year. I mentioned alumni board a minute ago. Clint's already alluded to Elliot's golfing prowess, but he makes a pretty good alumni board president as well. So early on, we developed some initiatives and, and have been working through those at a couple of alumni board meetings that we've already had. So mentorship, we've checked the box on that already, getting ready to roll it out. Some type of a signature event, we're looking at increasing our networking. We think that's valuable for our alumni as well as our students. So you, we'll watch for more to come on that. And then opportunities to support the university either as a volunteer or through financial support. Plenty of those are coming up. I mentioned the golf outing. 24-hour give is coming on September 22nd and 23rd. That'll be a great opportunity for you to get involved, not only as a volunteer, but part of the excitement of that day. We're going to a virtual format. Jen's already planned some wonderful things. She's got a few tricks up her sleeve, I think, right Jen? And And we're going to bring those to bear. There was some mention of the new software. We've got some new things that will roll out in development alumni relations. So be ready for some really creative thank yous and other things that'll be coming your way. I mentioned partnership dinner. I want to make sure you have that on your calendars. It's coming April 17th. It's the 50th anniversary. Our guests from last year have committed to rejoin us, Ben and Aaron Napier from the HGTV program hometown. If you haven't watched it, you should. Just watching the two of them makes you laugh. They're, they're really a lot of fun. Great Christians, a wonderful testimony. And you will enjoy the Napiers and make sure you're, you've got that on your calendar for April 17th next year. That's really a lot of things that are going on, but Dr. Stagner mentioned some of the things that we're involved in in the community. I thought it'd be good to highlight that. Number one, through some generous donors, there will be a new amphitheater coming. Obviously, a lot of the things that have gone on with COVID in building right now, it's going to be delayed a little bit longer than we hoped. But watch for that coming on campus along Lake North Central Park. Community involvement, we've had a spiritual formation committee this past year. We're implementing our president's council. We're working on that right now and beginning to assemble that group. The Rochester hometown Christmas parade, we participated in looking at will we be able to do that again this year with all the COVID concerns, obviously rotary, chamber of commerce partnerships, leader dogs for the blind, being involved with chief financial credit union, watch for a new credit card that'll be coming out branded for Rochester University. Our Rochester community schools hometown hustle and a lot more. So if you think about all the things that both students and alumni are involved in in the community, it's really as Dr. Stagner has said many times, in fact, and been captured in video, that we really strive to be Rochester's university. So if you have some spare time and feel like you would like to get more plugged in, feel free to reach out to Jen Portner. Most of you know Jen. You can reach her on email and/or shoot her a message on some of the, the new things that you'll be seeing that will be rolling out soon. And the last thing that was mentioned earlier, our RC to RU campaign. We're putting the finishing touches on signage and other things around campus. And so as you do come to campus, look for that. There's actually a website that allows you to participate in that if you're, if you're able to do that. So take a look on there and see if there's something that you might want to do to help us complete that conversion from Rochester College to Rochester University. So that's it for me. I'm going to turn it back over to Evan and he'll give you a little update on some really exciting things happening, both with spiritual life and with our chapel services. Evan?
Thank you so much, Steve. I appreciate that. It is again, good to be here with you all. Just a couple of really quick highlights. I'd like to begin by first saying I'm having a blast this semester, working with an awesome group of student leaders. We have a student leadership development where in the spring semester of every year, students get an opportunity to apply for certain student leader positions within the center for student life where I work. And I've got an awesome team of some really energetic, gifted, talented students that are helping us with spiritual life and campus ministry initiatives. We currently meet every Monday. Once we get to October, that'll move to every other week, but in the in-between weeks, they have office hours, they are being evaluated. It's a full fledged leadership development program. They're attending professional development workshops this semester. So each student leader is going to be required to attend three of those. And it's a great opportunity for them to have ownership in campus life, particularly with campus ministry and how we can offer programming to our students. And so they are very much responsible for a lot of what you will see in the coming weeks and even in the spring semester. Some of the things that we're focusing on is just really trying to be intentional of finding silver linings. Dr. Stocker said quite a few times in some of our other meetings that we don't want to focus on what we can't do, but what we can do. And so we've been reshaping our conversations to have a healthy amount of in-person events that are safe as well as virtual offerings. The main thing that you will see that's very different this year as alumni, you know, chapel is such an integral part of our institution and a spiritual life and the way that we arrive at spiritual formation. And so without being able to gather in person, we've had to deliver chapel programming and content virtually. So we've limited the amount of offerings and we've abbreviated the time that we deliver that. But every Tuesday and every Friday at 11:20 AM on Facebook, on YouTube and on Instagram, we are streaming live. Every Tuesday, it's typically 10 to 15 minutes. And then on Fridays, it's around 15 to 20 minutes of worship. So we've have a range of speakers, some really gifted recording artists, worship leaders and other presenters that'll be sharing on Fridays to help us with that virtual time of worship. We kicked off the year with a live in-person worship at our outdoor chapel right down at Lake North Central Park. And it was such a wonderful opportunity to be physically distanced, you know, and still have a chance to worship in our communal space. I think our students enjoyed it. I know I certainly did likewise, some of the other feedback that we got. And so we're going to work to, I think September 25th, October 2nd, weather permitting, we have two additional outdoor worship gatherings for that chapel space during Friday. But I'd like to encourage you to please be a part of our chapel streaming. Join us. It's our official Rochester University Facebook page. Again, every Tuesday and Friday at 11:20 AM. Like, share, comment, have Facebook watch parties. We think that this is a great opportunity for us, even going forward when we start gathering together in the auditorium again, to continue to extend our chapel offerings online to invite more people into that space. This has been one of the silver linings for us is that we have had an opportunity to invite people, whether they're speakers, singers, worship leaders, that maybe we may not have otherwise been able to have on campus. So that's something that gives us a little bit of a positive outlook, but we are also able to capture this footage. It's pre-recorded in hopes of like avoiding any potential technical difficulties, but we're making that available to you all. So please, it would mean the world if you all could participate in that with us. That's something that's a big deal is what we're doing with chapel. So that's some of the main ideas, some of the themes that you will hear this semester. They are in line with our institutional learning outcomes. So we will continue with our God and work discovering vocation series. So you'll hear speakers at different times throughout the semester touch base with that. But as an institution of higher learning and a faith-based school in a very real world, we're not going to ignore issues that are happening. So you're going to hear messaging in themes of hope, justice, peace. You're going to hear all these biblical messages that tie into things that are happening in the world today. And so I think it means a lot to our students. It's going to mean a lot to our community. And so those are some of the things that you can expect when you are tapped into our chapel programming. We've been really fortunate through a new initiative that began last year to work with a spiritual formation advisory group through this collective of faith-based leaders. Some are, they work in various capacities of ministry. Some are pastors or preaching ministers at church congregations. Others are just faith-based leaders and work in different industries. And so they are part of a collective group that we get a chance to partner and network with. And our community has been tremendously blessed. I personally have been through these relationships. So their voices have been spotlighted and heard through our chapel offerings as well as some other virtual programming that we will have with spiritual life as well. So it has been great to be a part of this diverse group of leaders. They're men, they're women, they're all from varying reformations and denominations. So it's been a breath of fresh air. And they add a lot of value to our institution. I believe that they look like our student body, you know, in, in many ways, and that's important. So they have a lot of value that they're offering to our ministry as well in hopes of providing a care to our students. So there's lots of other initiatives. But again, chapel is one of the main things, and I hope that you are participating and being connected to that space. So I look forward to seeing you online in the comments. And if there's ever anything that you need from our office, you're always welcome to reach out to me. I look forward to being connected with you. At this time, you've heard some updates from us. I hope while you were listening to our updates, that maybe it sparked some questions from you. If you do have questions for our president or any of the members of our senior leadership team, feel free to put those in the chat. I see we have one here and I'll just kind of read them in the order in which they appear. Our first question comes from Elliot. It's good to see you Elliot. Something that RU has always focused on is providing internship observation opportunities for many majors. With the current times, what accommodations or creative solutions are being made for majors where internship observations are a requirement? I'll kick that to Dr. Bruder.
We are working with all of our partners to maintain all of the internships and observations. Clinicals are still going on. So you know, until they kick us out of the hospitals, we'll be doing that. K through 12 has promised that all of the planning that they are doing, they will also include the teachers, student teachers in part of that planning. So we have them being placed now. Some are in person, some are online. And so everything that is happening in real time with the organizations are the experiences that our students are having as well.
Thank you so much. Great question there Elliot. Someone else that has a question, maybe even a comment. We want to give you an opportunity to, to drop that in the chat. We have some time in our allotted hour for this town hall meeting. So it's certainly not just about us in these updates, but it's also about giving space for your voice as well.
I'll fill some of the air while we're waiting for folks to, to type in. To Elliot's question, you know, it is obviously a big challenge with crazy sort of changes that are going on around us. But we're actually hopeful that as the mentoring programs develop, that that will also create some opportunities for some of those, not only internship experiences, but you know, networks and broadening the networks that come from those mentoring, mentoring relationships that allow us to, to find more opportunities to plug students into those sorts of things. So that, that's another kind of different sort of effort, a different sort of emphasis that we're working on related to that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next question is from Tim Parker. Tim, thanks for being here, sir. We go way back. Tim's question says, I believe it was a masters in clinical counseling that was going to be offered. Is there going to be a specialty that the program will focus on and will CACRP accreditation be sought?
So I'll take that one too. We have shifted the focus for the MA to a clinical psychology MA. And so it's not, it won't be counseling, it'll be clinical psychology. CACRP, is that counseling? Okay, so most likely not that accreditation.
Yeah, Tim, it's, hi Tim, by the way. Yeah, it's because it's a psych degree and it's a master's degree, as I'm sure you're aware. There's a, you, you can obtain a limited license to practice psychology with a master's degree and the right kind of training in Michigan. And in some other jurisdictions as well. And this, this, the curriculum of this degree program will be designed to lead to that limited licensure for people who want to practice at the master's level or obviously prep for a doctoral program in psychology.
Thank you both for that. Next question is from Nancy. Nancy states that she has several groups for organizations and charities on Facebook. Can you set up an alumni group for us? I don't know, Jen, can you, can, is that something?
Well, I think the master, Jen can comment, but I see Larry Stewart's also on tonight. Larry, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about all of the Facebook groups that you have already set up for alumni. And in fact, I think Jen got on today and sent some announcements out about this town hall. So I think there's alumni groups set up on Facebook for several decades anyway.
Yes, there's an alumni group actually for every decade and all alums are welcome to post in those, whether it be personal updates, you know, prayer requests, things that are going on. You know, events that would apply to other alums here in the area. Nancy, maybe we can chat a little bit about this offline too, as we work through the alumni association and work with some of those nonprofits, especially with our Warrior Serve event and the Rise mentoring initiatives. And maybe even some of our internship opportunities.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Larry, did you, did you have anything you wanted to add to the, about the Facebook groups? Thank you, Jen. Thank you, muted.
Okay, okay. Can you, can you hear me there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, the Facebook groups that we have for 60, 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000, 2010s and the MRE graduates, those have a lot of members. So that has a good exposure for whatever a former student wants to bring up, whether it's volunteer opportunities, what's going on in their lives, you're welcome to post anything on those groups. So they're well-developed and we do a lot of posting with information about what's going on on campus as well. So if you're not in those groups, it's good to join those and to make use of them.
Thank you, thank you, thank you everyone for weighing in on that. Our next question is from Nick O'Neil. Good to see you, sir. For the seniors looking for jobs after they graduate, are there going to be job fairs held at the university during this time? If so, when will we know?
So we are limiting outside visitors to campus at this time and hopefully if we go to a phase five for the state, then we certainly will plan a job fair hosted on campus. But right now we are not hosting any job fairs on campus. We do have postings and so we're, we're curating those postings and you tell me, would it be good to have that emailed out to everybody? Maybe I take it through Larry or Steve and, and get that posted somewhere as we curate the job postings that are available.
There's a, there's a link on the alumni section of the website for the Center for Career Studies and so on. There's a link on there with a job so they can see that there as well.
Yep. Maybe we send that link out though, is what I'm saying, as we continue to update it. I'm just thinking aloud now.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that several different ways. So great idea.
That's great, great, great. Someone else, are there any other questions? I know it's not a ton of us here, but you're welcome to ask and weigh in on anything that you've heard tonight. It's a great time to, to share. While you're, you're thinking of maybe any final thoughts or questions, if you are not already, I know both Jen and Larry have alluded to our Rochester University Facebook alumni groups by decade. Please, if you're not already, check out the official Rochester University Facebook page. If you use Twitter, you can follow the institution there. If you use Instagram, you can follow both. I'll type this in the chat. Both the Rochester U account and then also student life RU on Instagram so that you can see the updates. We're constantly cross-posting information on a regular basis so that you're staying connected. I know development alumni, they have communications that go out. So you're, you're getting a lot of that information there as well. But we want to make sure that you have that other social media platforms we're providing in, sharing content. The next question is from James, James Chambers. As a pastor, are there any ways pastors and church leaders can mentor our ministry students?
Yes, we will get you in touch with our, our department chair, Dr. Naomi Walters, because definitely that is something that she's very active about doing. She connects students as early as she can and she tries to really get students working with pastors in the area.
Yeah, that's a good question. The other thing after our initial pilot, which is, as I mentioned earlier, with the school of business, we do plan to expand the, expand the Rise Mentor Program across all of our majors and, and continue to work with our faculty as they recommend students to be involved in a program. I would encourage you to, to go out and check out that website. We demoed some of it the other night for our alumni. We demoed some of it the other night for our alumni board, they were very enthused. And so Jim, thanks for bringing that up and it's a great way to get involved. Scott mentioned earlier, if you know students, if you know somebody that has a potential student that would be interested, but I would encourage you the same way. If you've not touched base with your fellow alumni in a while, there's a lot of great reasons for them to get more active now, get more involved with all the things that are going on and we'd be happy to help with that. Jen, I, Angie, anybody on our team, I know Larry, and just feel free to reach out. There, there are plenty of ways for you to get plugged in and mentorship is definitely gonna be one of the most exciting.
There are links for the alumni Facebook groups. If you go to the alumni section of the website, there are links to each of those groups by decade, so that's a good way to connect with those groups.
Sounds like an exciting opportunity that's being made for us all through the mentorship program. If there are no, if there are no other questions, I will ask Dr. Stogner if he has any closing remarks before we wrap up.
Yeah, thanks Evan, I'll just say a couple of things. So first of all, thank you again for taking the time to be here tonight. And I just wanna let you know how important you are to us as an institution. You've heard a lot of conversation tonight about marketing and branding and advertising and trying to get the word out there about our institution. There is no better marketing and advertising for any institution than its alumni. You are the folks who, who are out there in the world representing what we stand for and because of that, you're really the, the greatest standard bearers that we have for what this institution means and what it's all about. So, so thank you for being that. And I'd love for us to, as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, to keep the communication lines open better than we have in the past. We're gonna work to try to do that so that we can understand better how that we can be of service to you as you continue to, to sort of bear that standard for us out there in the world. And then the final thing I wanna say is that we're hopeful and prayerful that in the face of all that's going on in the world around us, that you and your families are healthy and safe. And our prayer and hope for you is that, that you are and that you will continue to be that in the days ahead. So thanks again for being here tonight. Before we, before we leave, I'm sorry, I just had one more thing that I meant to mention earlier. As part of the changeover from RC to RU, we did just change over our email addresses over the weekend. So if you as an alumni are still using your school email account, which is perfectly fine, your, your suffix on that will now be @rochesteru.edu. And so now when you're emailing anybody on campus, any faculty, staff, students, or if, again, if you're still using your, your email from when you were a student, that's the new suffix now, @rochesteru.edu.
Thank you, thank you Scott.
Like announcements at the end of church, sorry about that.
It's perfectly fine. The, the mentoring link that has been referenced is now in the chat. I wanna give you a, a quick moment to take a look there, you can click that hyperlink or copy paste it, or you can save the chat if you wanna revisit any of these questions. But thank you Dr. Stogner and other members of our senior leadership team for hosting this alumni, it's been great to connect with you all and we hope to do this again soon and let's stay connected. Everybody, you all have a great night.